Test, test, test.
Yeah, that's right.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Rye Town Council meeting of February 15, 2024. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Please stand, please remain standing. Heavenly Father, bless assemblage. Grant us the wisdom to make every decision fair-minded and the best interest for all its residents. Amen.
Hope, roll call, please.
Councilperson Pamela Jaffe.
Here.
Councilperson Gil Axelrod.
Here.
Councilperson Thomas Nardi.
Here.
Councilperson Randy Selyer.
Present.
And Supervisor Gary Zuckerman.
Also present.
And accounted for.
Thank you. Minutes of January 2, 2024. They have a motion and a second to adopt them.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to take the agenda out of order. We have Dan Tartaglia here to present on several tax cert settlements, and I'd like to do that first, and then we'll go back to the beginning of the agenda. That is, okay, the first one is item 5.9, estate of Christopher Brewster. Dan, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mr. Supervisor, members of the board. Daniel Tartaglia, 800 Westchester Avenue, Rybrook, New York. This case, I believe, Charlie, this is, this is, 713 Westchester Avenue?
Yes, it's a residential house. It's in court.
This is, this is a residential house that has fallen into disrepair. We put it on this evening. You'll notice the only year at issue is 2023. When we do that, we can make an adjustment to the assessed value without any refund. So that's, that's this first one. It's just, it's a residential property.
Thank you. Before, before we vote on that, I just want to bring to everybody's attention once again that we have periodic tax cert meetings with all of the jurisdictions, Rybrook, Village of Rybrook, Village of Portchester, Portchester School District, Blindbrook School District, and the Village of Amernick, and the Rynek School District with regard to all the properties within their jurisdiction, so that they are all aware of upcoming, what is on the tax cert list, and any potential settlements that may be upcoming, what may or may not go to court, what the potential settlements are. So, Dan, you have discussed this with, I guess, Westchester Avenue is in Village of Rybrook and the Portchester School District?
This is Village of Portchester.
Village of Portchester.
Yes, I believe so.
Because it says 713 Westchester Avenue, Rybrook.
This, this resolution needs to be amended, Hope.
Is it Rybrook with District 4?
It's Rybrook with District 4?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can we put this to the end, Mr. Supervisor?
Sure.
We'll just make an amendment to this.
Excuse me?
On the top part.
There's section of Rybrook that's District 4, school district.
Well, this one...
No, no, the resolution, excuse me, the resolution says 713 Westchester Avenue in the Village of Portchester and the Portchester School District. Other than that, it's entirely correct.
That's correct.
Okay. So, since we haven't had, since we haven't had a motion, Hope, please amend it to say in the Village of Rybrook and the Portchester. And as amended, may I have a motion and a second?
I make the motion.
I'll second.
Please call the room.
Councilperson Jaffe. Councilperson Axelrod.
Yes.
Councilperson Nardi.
Yes.
Councilperson Selyer.
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes. The castle on Willett Avenue.
Yeah, this is, this is a large property. It's a big residential rental property, and what we were able to do with this is to, is to get rid of four years that were pending, and there's only one year worth where there's going to be any refunds, which is going to be 2022. So the school tax refund on this case is $76,834, and the Village of Portchester refund is $38,648.94. Again, 2023, because of the way we're able to structure this settlement, there's not going to be any refund. So this is very helpful because we're able to get rid of all of these years with just one year worth of refunds. We did send this information to Phil Ciliano from the Portchester School District and to Tony Siligata from the Village of Portchester, which thanked us for the information, and so they're aware that these refunds are coming.
Thank you. Motion and a second, please.
So moved. Second.
Call the room, please.
Councilperson Jaffe.
Yes.
Councilperson Axelrod. Councilperson Nardi.
Yes.
Councilperson Selyer.
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes. To Highland Street?
This is the Byron Self-Storage on Highland Street and Avondale Avenue, if you're familiar with that part of Portchester. The, what had happened originally with this is that this property, along with another storage facility in Bridgeport, Connecticut, were purchased by the same purchaser at the same time as the back end of 1031 exchanges, and the allocation of the purchase price between this facility and the one in Bridgeport was not done with any thought at the time of the transaction. The prior assessor took the purchase price number, applied it here, which, which gave this a much higher assessed value than it really should have been. So again, by working with the property owner, we're able to structure this and give them a reduction in 2023, which is, so we're removing a big case from the calendar without any refund.
Thank you. Questions? Motion and a second, please.
So moved.
I'll second.
Call the room, please.
Councilperson Jaffe.
Aye.
Councilperson Axelrod.
Yes.
Councilperson Nardi.
Yes.
Councilperson Selyer.
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes. 305 South Regent Street, please.
305 South Regent Street. The owner is JDMH Real Estate of Portchester LLC. It's the Restaurant Depot property on South Regent Street, which again is a big, a big facility, a big piece of property in Portchester. They just came off a pilot. So as soon as they came off their pilot, they started to grieve their assessments, and again, working with them and working with the assessor on this, we gave them a going-forward reduction and got them to withdraw two of the years that were pending. So this whole settlement, again, is not going to require any refunds from any of the taxing jurisdictions, and then we'll completely caught up with them.
Thank you. Questions? Motion and a second, please.
Make the motion.
I'll second.
Call the room, please.
Councilperson Jaffe.
Aye.
Councilperson Axelrod. Councilperson Nardi.
Yes.
Councilperson Selyer.
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes. Next one is, I think the next one is Jeff's case. If, if so, skip it.
Jill's trial. Jill's trial.
That's your case. That's your case. Well, let's do the next one then, as long as Dan is standing there. Alexander Cammerman, that's yours, right?
Yes, again, this is a residential property. It's in Village of Mamaronek in Rhineck School District. Um, this one is going to require some refunds, although they're not large refunds. I did contact the school district with this information. They appreciated getting the call so that they know it's coming and they can budget for it accordingly, but the school district refund on this will be forty-seven thousand dollars, and the vill, the village refund will be fourteen thousand six hundred dollars.
Thank you. And from what I know about the Rhineck School District, when they, when a tax cert is filed, they reserve the entire possible amount, so they, they have the money for it.
We did notify them.
We notified them. Thank you. A motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Call the room, please, Hope?
Counselperson Jaffe.
Yes.
Counselperson Axelrod.
Yes.
Counselperson Nardi.
Yes.
Counselperson Selyer.
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes. Now, Gil, Dan, that's it for you.
And thank you for taking me out of order, Mr. Supervisor.
Thank you. Jeff, you want to do Gil's Pride while we're doing the tax certs?
Sure. This is, uh, the Popeyes Fried Chicken location on Post Road. It's at, uh, two seventy-five Boston Post Road, and the, um, like Dan said, we, we alert the school district, this is Rhineck, so we've alerted the school district and I've also alerted the village. The refunds are fairly minimal, eighteen thousand to the school and nine thousand to the village. This covers four years, so I recommend settlement.
It's five years. Five years.
Portchester, that one?
It's Portchester. Got the wrong one?
No, this is Gil's Pride. This is two seventy-five Boston Post Road.
In Mamaronek or in Portchester?
It says Portchester on the rest.
It's Mamaronek.
Portchester? Do we have a right now? The, uh...
In any event, the stakeholders...
The resolution is correct?
The stakeholders have been made aware of this through our quarterly meetings.
All right. Thank you. Motion and a second, please?
So moved. I'll second.
Call the room, Hope?
Counselperson Jaffe.
Yes.
Counselperson Axelrod.
Yes.
Counselperson Nardi.
Yes.
Counselperson Selyer.
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Jeff. And now we're going back to the top of the agenda. Presentation, Temple Emmanuel. I think that, uh, we don't have somebody from there, just, we received Debbie's memo regarding that, and, uh, this is a proposal for a charitable use.
So the Temple Emmanuel Religious School, um, is actively participates in lots of volunteer activities. Um, they have come to cleanups at Crawford, they're always in touch with what's going on at the African-American Cemetery. In this case, um, the seventh grade would like to participate in something called Lasagna Love, where the class comes and uses a kitchen to make thirty lasagnas for, uh, the nonprofit organization called Lasagna Love, for, um, food, basically a food delivery to underserved population. They'll be accompanied by faculty and parent volunteers, and they're asking that we waive the fee for the kitchen, which would be a hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay. Any comments?
Is, is there any possibility of a testing for, tasting for quality control?
I imagine they will take volunteers, Randy. I'd be more than happy to.
I'm sure if you vote for this resolution, I'm sure you can get, they'll give you a lasagna. I think this is a great cause. I think this is, this is a major reason why we have this facility, is to provide services to our entire population, especially our underserved population. I think this is a great cause, so, motion and a second?
So moved. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Our next item is Debbie, the Arbor Day proclamation.
Give me a second to pull that up on the screen. So as, um, you may recall, uh, the town of Rye has become a Tree City USA, and as part of that, um, distinction, uh, we honor Arbor Day and observe Honored Arbor Day, and what you see in front of you is a proclamation saying just that, um, and we're, um, asking you to, um, adopt proclamations both for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three and also for twenty twenty-four. Um, they say pretty much the same thing, other than the fact that the date of Arbor Day changes with, and I'm, I'm happy to read it if you'd like me to spend some time on that.
I think we can read it, and the people at home can read it. I'll just read the therefore, "Town of Rye does hereby proclaim whichever date it is in the year as Arbor Day in the town of Rye, and we urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support our efforts to safeguard our trees and woodlands. And we urge all, further, we urge all citizens to plant and care for the trees to promote the well-being of this and future generations, and signed by me." So, uh, it's unusual that was, where, I noticed that, that I signed one previously, but now we're doing the final proclamation. You can see my signature is in different ink on each proclamation, so, um... A motion and a second to declare April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four...
Twenty eighth. Oh, sorry, I had the wrong one. Sorry.
That would be twenty, April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three.
April twenty-eighth, twenty-three, and twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-four, as Arbor Day in the town of Rye. Motion? Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
Resolutions, the first, I see our good friend Brian Sullivan is here. Hi, Brian, how are you?
Hi, how are you?
Good. There's a resolution to appoint Brian Mortimer Sullivan, I never knew your middle name was Mortimer. Mortimer Sullivan, as consultant for the Town of Rye Sustainability Committee. Debbie, just tell us what this is about, because this is not the first time we've done this.
So a fixture of our year has, um, sponsored, sponsored by the Town Sustainability Committee, our semi-annual community cleanup days, and as the town of Rye is comprised of the Village of Portchester, the Village of Rybrook, the Rhineck portion of the Village of Mamaronek, and of course, we also administer Rye Town Park, we have four communities that we coordinate community cleanup activities twice a year. Um, there's a fair amount of organizing and planning that has to go into those things. Um, our next event is coming up on, uh, what I believe is April thirteenth, um, and we, um, have, thankfully, Brian Sullivan as our consultant, who is handling the project management for what has become a four or five-ring circus of activities going on simultaneously in neighboring communities, um, all to celebrate and take care of the earth. So in the, um, spring, we focus on planting, um, native sustainable plants, and in the fall, we focus on community cleanups. And we're very grateful to have Brian helping us get organized and, uh, and implement our plans.
We should, um, Brian, this is your second or third year?
Second.
Second year. And prior to Brian, we had...
Melissa Greco.
Melissa Greco. So, um, motion and a second?
So moved, because I don't think we could do it without you. Thank you.
Yeah, why don't you say something, Pam? You're, you're chair of our Sustainability Committee, so...
Honestly, it's a huge undertaking, and Brian, actually, every, this is your third, I believe, after we met, um, at a community cleanup two Novembers ago at this point, and it was a freezing day, and Brian and I were basically on the waterfront in Portchester, picking up garbage and doing all sorts of fun activities, um, and said to him, we could use someone with his connections and his passion to help us with these twice annual activities, and Brian has been, I have to say remarkably faithful through the town. You've been wonderful as far as planning these and being the ones to reach out and helping us with our climate smart activities yearly twice. So I personally thank you. You do a lot for the town and the land of the town.
Thank you. And Brian, I remember being there the last one with you. Wasn't that the cold, rainy, rainy day at, in Portchester? I had come over from, I think from Bowman Avenue, checked on you, and you, and I think one other person were all covered up and cleaning up. Thank you. So, um, do we have a motion and a second yet? Motion and a second, please?
I so move.
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And thank you.
Do you want to say anything, Brian?
Thank you very much for, uh...
What up to the... I want to switch to five point three, and I see Ruby's on that one, climate smart.
So, yeah.
I know.
No, no worries. Thanks again for, you know, letting me help again this year. It was an honor last year, and I look forward to getting the work done again this year. So, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Next resolution, stay there Debbie, is, uh, to establish a climate smart task force and appoint Ruby Tower to serve as Climate Smart Communities Coordinator.
So, um, our previous climate smart commu, uh, coordinator was Sylvie Binder, who did a super job helping us to, um, assemble and document, um, our activities and actions that would enable us to qualify for bronze certification, uh, for the Climate Smart Program. We are also working towards certification in, uh, clim, do you remember what C E C stands for? I'm always getting them backwards. There are a number of, of, of clean energy, community, got it, initiatives, um, we are working on. Correct. And to help us keep everything straight and documented, um, we would like to appoint Ruby Tower as our new climate smart coordinator, which is a required action for bronze certification, and, um, in addition, she is doing a remarkable job with our other, um, sustainability initiatives. So I think she's an excellent choice. Uh, most recently, she made it in record time through our E E C B G, um, uh, grant program, which is run by the Department of Energy, um, and has enabled us to get a sign off so that we can proceed with the acquisition of a fully funded electric truck, which, um, we should have within the next week, I believe, and, uh, so that's...
Stole my thunder, because the next thing I was going to mention is our electric truck. Thank you. Um, the comment I have is that, first of all, Ruby was our intern last year in, uh, the supervisor's office. She's currently getting her graduate degree in public administration and will be, uh, coming to work for us after she graduates next May. Am I correct? Am I premature in announcing that?
Not premature in announcing it. I don't know when her start date is.
Whatever her start date is. And, uh, um, so I think, uh, it's wonderful that she's going to be our climate smart coordinator and taking Sylvie's place, who did a remarkable job. Where is Sylvie now, Jeff?
She is the, uh, mayor of the city of New York's, uh...
Not the, she's not the mayor.
New York's, uh, possessive. She, she runs the, um, she's the greenhouse gas emissions name for the city, in other words, all the building owners, in charge of making sure that the city of New York as a whole reduces their greenhouse gas emissions footprint. So that's what she does.
So moving from the Town of Rye coordinator to the city of New York.
Maybe.
Nice, nice step. Nice step.
She's got great training there.
I'm glad you said that. Thank you. So, motion and a second?
So moved. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Debbie, Ruby needs assistance. Um, we are entering into the point of the year where Blindbrook High School seniors are flocking to us for their senior options, and one of them does have an environmental interest, so we may be able to give Sylvie about six weeks, I think, of having someone work with her if she feels like she needs that. Or not Sylvie, I'm sorry, Ruby, Ruby.
Happy to discuss that possibility. At this point, Ruby's working remotely from Binghamton, New York, so that could be a challenge, but...
Not necessarily, but love Binghamton. Definitely a fan. Go Bearcats or Colonials if you're older.
I'll make sure Sylvie, she needs to talk to Sylvie, no problem.
That'd be great. I'm sure it would be really helpful.
I think that's a, that's a great idea. Thank you, Jeff. Okay, next item, resolution to declare the wheelchair ramp at Crawford Park as surplus. Uh, we had a wheelchair ramp. It is now parrotly sitting between the two containers doing nothing because our facility is fully handicap accessible, so we are going to declare the ramp a surplus and hopefully we'll sell it. Questions? Uh, if not, may I have a motion and a second?
I make the motion.
I'll second.
Comment? So you raise your hand.
I'm sorry.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And you have to go to the, um, yeah. For Cara Tannenbaum.
Oh, did we skip that? Oh my, Cara, I apologize. I just want you, I just want you to know, my hand flips up and down this agenda, and I just want you to know that probably at every meeting, I skip over one thing and have to be reminded to go back to it. So, okay. Entering into a, uh, concession agreement with Cara Tannenbaum for the use of the Crawford Mansion as a establishing our Crawford culinary program. Debbie, do you want to speak on this?
This is a pilot program, um, as, um, the, the, the kitchen at Crawford Mansion Community Center was specifically designed to be both a catering kitchen and a teaching kitchen, and this is yet another step in our program to make this place as busy as possible. Uh, we have chef and Rhineck resident Cara Tannenbaum, who, um, is, um, entering into a concession agreement to, um, use our kitchen for, um, approximately five hundred hours this year at the standard rate, um, minus, uh, the value of two pieces of equipment, um, a professional-grade refrigerator and a convection oven. The, uh, refrigerator will, um, be located locked and in the basement, um, and the, uh, convection oven will fit very neatly into a, a spot that's remarkably designed for just that thing in the kitchen. Um, and, uh, as part of the program, uh, Cara has, um... And as part of the program, Cara has enthusiastically agreed to teach free cooking classes to residents. And we thought we would design those, schedule them around holidays. But I will invite her up to introduce herself to you and talk about what she has in mind. Any questions?
I just need to make one clarification. If you look at the PDF of the agreement, the agreement says lease, we're changing that to concession agreement.
I believe I made that change.
In the actual thing that we're going to sign. There's a few sections in there that still reference lease. It's not a leasehold. It's a concession agreement. That'll be changed before it's executed.
Well, the resolution on tonight is for.
The res is correct. It's the actual.
Okay.
Concession agreement.
Okay.
Cara? Aye. I feel very, very lucky that I am able to participate in this community in this way. Some of, I know some of you. And I have a long history of being both a culinary educator and caterer, former restaurant owner. And you have a beautiful facility, which I hope to use both as a catering kitchen and as an asset, as a teaching kitchen in this community. We, there's always, everyone always wants to take a class. I've been teaching, actually, at Temple Emmanuel culinary classes, which are very well attended. People, people love it. And I'm happy to use this facility to do that, as well as to run my own little business as a caterer. So I just wanted to meet everybody and thank you all for the opportunity to be part, as I said, I'm a Reineck resident, to be part of this community. It's sort of a very full circle thing for me. So, thank you. And I'm happy to answer any questions. I, it has yet to be decided what these classes will be. I'm really open to any sort of suggestion or, you know, there's always somebody who says, oh, I really want to learn how to temper chocolate, or I really want to learn how to make whatever. And I'm, and I am actually participating in the lasagna love event. So, I'll be here for that. I'll make sure you get your lasagna. But the, but, so I, you know, it's, I, I'm open to any sort of discussion about what will, what those classes will be and when they'll be scheduled for. So.
So, I have a question for you. I have two sons who are living at home.
Uh huh.
And they've, both are fabulous cooks, but one of them in particular has gotten into baking recently. In fact, my birthday, he made a German chocolate cake, my favorite. So I'm just, I was going to ask, is baking part of your repertoire?
I started, I started in this industry many, many years ago. The real truth is, I had a, I had a first career. I was an archaeologist. And then, and that, that didn't look like it, there was much of a future in it. So I was working on a PhD, and then.
Well, there's a lot of past though, archaeology.
Then I sort of moved into the anthropology of food. So, anyway, the, um, I started as a, as a baker. I did, in, in New Haven, Connecticut, many years ago. And then wound up owning a restaurant, whatever. And then I became a pastry instructor at the Institute of Culinary Education. So I feel very well qualified to teach, to teach baking. And I did that for years. And then I moved into, you know, culinary instructor. And then I was a, a school administrator. So I feel like I've sort of touched it all. And baking is probably my first true love in this industry.
You know who's a good baker too? Pam. She makes the best brownies ever.
You can make. Oh, yeah. I was like, I'll challenge you.
You'd win, you'd win.
I mean, there's all sorts of, you know, you have this beautiful facility down there. There's all kinds of things like that, you know, both holiday related and just regular whatever that we can use the kitchen for. Happy to teach your kids how to bake. They probably know how to bake.
You know something, Cara? I think, I, I think, you know, anybody, anybody who's watching this, either live or when it comes on TV on repeat, if you have any ideas as to what should be offered, send them into, to the town. And we'll, we'll pass them on to Cara.
I'm happy to. So, anyway, thank you.
Really excited. Kind of want to come into your kitchen and take a look.
Yeah, I'm always, you know, it's, it's, it's easy to be an enthusiastic teacher. And I, I love to do it, even though, you know, I did it for many, many years. And it's very satisfying to see, because it's a hands-on, you always have a hands-on opportunity. It, as an instructor, I can see people progress and learn how to do it. It's very satisfying for both people learning and for the instructor.
Do you have a website? Are you any chance?
No. I'm, I, I have operated on this theory of you need to be able to find me for me to cook for you, which is not so smart, but it's worked for me. I have a couple of big clients who've stuck with me for many, many years. I sort of have a niche with musicians in the city. And I've been the caterer for the New York Philharmonic Orchestra for, this will be the 30th year. So it's, it's, it's very small. And what I do is not, you know, it's, I'm not looking to expand my business. I'm, you know, I'm looking to sort of just coast. So.
How about more books? Because when I Googled you.
Yes, the book comes up.
What I found was your book.
Right. And I was actually just approached last week about doing a second book. So I'm not really sure if I'm going to do it. I did write a cookbook. It was published in 2015, I think, W W Norton. It's a beautiful book. It's called In a Nutshell, which is Cooking and Baking with Nuts and Seeds. And it's still, I think it's still available on Amazon. And the, it may just be the, people have had trouble getting the hardcover. You can still get the paperback version. But, and I'm thinking of the second book, which we'll see. I'll be testing it in this kitchen if I ever, if we, if we get to it. So.
Baking at Crawford.
Baking at Crawford, exactly. Exactly.
An inside scoop to Leonard Bernstein's food passions.
Yeah, I've no idea. You know what? I've never, I never cooked before.
Nice. No, you want to throw the mic? No?
But, but many others. It's, it, there's, there's a whole world of that out there. We can discuss that another time. So, anyway, thank you very much. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
We still have to have a motion. Motion in a second, please?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Score the roll on this one.
Counselperson Jaffe?
Enthusiastic, yes.
Counselperson Axelrod?
Yes.
Counselperson Ardi?
Yes.
Counselperson Sellier?
Absolutely.
And Supervisor Zuckerman?
Yes. Next, thank you, Cara, Cara. Next item is the five-five. Standard workday and record of activity for Jose Castaneda. Hope, tell us what this is about.
Okay. Some elected and appointed officials use a timekeeping system. But for those that don't, the New York State and local retirement system implemented the records of activities, which is each person that is joining into the retirement system fills out a three-month schedule of, of all the hours that they worked. And this is what Judge Castaneda did. And then we're to post this for 30 days. And adopt the resolution and then post it.
We need to have a resolution on this?
Yes.
Okay. There we do. My, my resolution's not coming up on here.
Oh, I just opened mine.
Mine isn't either.
Okay. Hope, why don't you read, read this resolution and then we can vote on it?
Okay. This records of activities. It's, it's a formula, which, let me see, I have to get back to it.
Is there an actual resolution? Because I don't see it. I see.
If you turn.
It's not coming up on my.
Oh, it's not coming up?
No, it's not.
All right.
It's not even in the printed book.
Okay. Well.
Did you have?
Full-time people, I have it here.
Yeah, why don't you read it out and then we'll vote on it?
Okay. Full-time employees are required to work an eight-hour day. Part-time are required to work a six-hour day and submit all the activities they did for that time. So Judge Castaneda submitted some, a resolution and, or his R O A, which is the records of activity. And it showed that he worked 7.95 hours a day. And that's the resolution we're adopting.
We're approving this, is that?
Mm-hmm. Well, it is resolutions.
It's not in a resolution form.
Oh.
So do you, is it necessary to approve it this month? Can we do it next month?
Oh, we could do it next month.
So why don't we do a formal resolution next?
Isn't that, it's right here at the bottom where it says.
Where?
Yeah.
Five point five.
Since she's saying this is the resolution down here.
Yeah, that's what we have to vote.
So you're saying this is, this is the resolution here on the bottom of this?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So that's the resolution.
Is this, this is the actual resolution?
Yeah, right here.
No, I, I, I can, I see that. It says that, that the clerk being moved says that the posting of the resolution began on such and such, continued for 30 days, that the resolution was available to the public on the, on our website. So I don't know that this requires an actual resolution, Hope. This is, this is on the website. So I don't think we need a resolution. I think this is just sufficient and it's on the website. If that changes, we could come back to it, okay? So just as long as it's posted.
I think, I think Eric, for the record, you should just take sort of like judicial notice. That's not judicial notice. You're not a court.
We're not a court.
Counsel notice.
Well, we are, we, it is in, it is in the agenda.
Yeah.
It's formally posted. It is on the website. So, yes, we are taking notice that, that the requirements of the New York State Retirement System are being complied with. Okay? Okay. So we'll move on to the next item. Renewing the contract with Millennium Strategies. Millennium is our grant writer. And we pay them a grand total of $25,200 annually to write our grants. They advise us of grants? I'm, I'm getting to that, yes. Of which half is paid by the Town of Rye and half is paid by the Rytown Park Commission. And Millennium is also used as a grant writer by the Village of Portchester, City of Rye, and the Village of Rye Borough. So they get around in. And I must say, they have certainly exceeded the amount of money we've paid them in the grants that we've received. Have anything to add, Deb?
No, I don't. I would say that the, by paying them a monthly retainer, I think the town and for that matter, Rytown Park are much the better. There isn't a month that goes by that they don't come up with some new ideas, very happily participate in exploring new grants continually. I've, I've been on the phone or emailed with two members of the team several times a week for the last, for this entire year. So I've, I'm very impressed with their work ethic. And they truly do have the best interests of the town at heart. And they're constantly earning their retainer. And they've literally brought in millions of dollars.
Okay. Motion in a, motion in a second?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Comments?
As long as they're making, you know, getting us grants and it's over the amount that we pay them, so, so it's all right.
All right. Call the roll, Hope?
One thing, they're, they're holding this rate for several years.
Thank you.
Even better than seven.
Not as good as four. Hope, please call the.
Counselperson Jaffe?
Yes.
Counselperson Axelrod?
Yes.
Counselperson Ardi?
Yes.
Counselperson Sellier?
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman?
Yes. Resolution awarding a bid for on-call handyman and property services to John Zicka. Debbie?
Every once in a while, every several years, it's important that we keep our contracts current. We had a contract with John Zicka last year. However, the scope of work changed this year. And also the nature of the work. I, in reading the, the labor regulations, I came to understand that the type of work that John Zicka was doing for the town actually was not prevailing wage, which meant that we could recognize a significant savings potentially by going out to bid again. So that is what we did. And we had five proposals submitted in response to the R F P. And happily, Mr. Zicka prevailed as the, the best and most affordable of the proposals.
Tommy, do you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I do.
I figured you might.
John's good people. John does a lot for the town. He does a lot where he doesn't even charge the town. And he's the best man for the job. John's really, he's there when you need, when we need him. So, I'm glad he's got the contract.
Me too.
He might be a good guy, but he's also the low bidder.
Well, that's a good thing for the town.
But by quite a significant margin, he's the low bidder.
When you consider that the high bid was 544,000 and his bid was 60,000. Yeah, I think there's a big difference there.
You know, but John loves the Town of Rye. He loves the Town of Rye. And he bends over backwards for us.
I know. I agree. He's, he is good people. Motion in a second?
Oh, I'm making the motion.
Call the roll, please, Hope.
Counselperson Jaffe?
Yes.
Counselperson Axelrod?
Yes.
Counselperson Ardi?
Definitely yes.
Counselperson Sellier?
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman?
Yes. Approving the contract with Tyler Technologies to update the residential and commercial properties roles, roles for the year 2024. Charlie, you want to talk, talk about this?
Good evening. Charles Allen, Town Assessor. Tyler, we use annually, like the resolution states, to do our residential and commercial valuation. They've been doing it for years. They've done a great job. Obviously, last year was the first year I worked with them. I think we did a great job. We had low, low number of certs this year, and low number of residential filings. So it looks like they're doing a really good job. So I would say it would be a great idea to sign them up again for another year and get them on board.
And the price is 104,500? How does this compare with last year's price?
It's, it's the same as last year. We ended up spending 94,500 last year. There is a, there is extras that we possibly would need. But as of right now, we plan to spend only 94,500, but a max of 104,500.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
Just out of curiosity, did you look at other potential service providers?
We've looked over, I know before I got here, they looked at other service providers. There was a company prior to them. I think his name was Vision. They were, it weren't as good. Tyler does Greenberg, Austining. It does a lot of Westchester County municipalities. And they're very good. And, you know, I mean, if there is an opportunity to look at some more, we happily look at them. But right now, they are the industry standard right now in Westchester and in the state. So.
Great. And also, they, they are the ones who did our last revaluation. So they're very familiar with the Town of Rye and the properties. So, motion in a second, please?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Hope, call the roll.
Counselperson Jaffe?
Yes.
Counselperson Axelrod?
Yes.
Counselperson Ardi?
Yes.
Counselperson Sellier?
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman?
Yes. Going down. Now we have the fun ones. Okay. Environmental compliance to make findings and determinations for the reconstruction and improvements to the Otter Creek Bridge. We have two resolutions. One is the environmental and one is the bond resolution. First for the Otter Creek Bridge. And then the next set of resolutions is for Rytown Park improvements. So. and then the next set of resolutions is for Rye Town Park improvements. So, Dave, you want to take over at this point? Thank you.
So, I'll just, the environmental resolutions have to be approved prior to the bond resolutions, but I'll just talk to the bond resolutions.
Let's talk about the environmental. I'll talk, I'll talk about the environmental.
Yeah.
The, the environmental resolution for Otter Creek Bridge, even, it's required for the bonding, as Dave explained. However, the Otter Creek Bridge planning is along. Our engineers, HVEA, have already performed the environmental review. It's a, an unlisted action. An EAF was filed and we have a, a mega. So, that's where that stands. It's already completed. Now, the bond resolution?
So, the.
Let's vote on this. Okay. Any questions on this? Motion in a second on the environmental bond, environmental resolution for the Otter Creek Bridge.
Make the motion.
Call the roll, Hope.
Councilperson Jaffe?
Yes.
Councilperson Axlerod?
Yes.
Councilperson Nardi?
Yes.
Councilperson Selyer?
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes. Now, Dave, the bond resolution?
So, the bond resolution, the town board is approving tomorrow up to that amount for the Otter Creek Bridge cost. Now, that, that's a ninety-five percent grant that's coming and the town will have to outlay about a million and four in, in, in funds for, for the, those improvements, but after reimbursement, the net cost probably is going to be less than three hundred thousand. So, this just gives the town the ability to borrow those funds. Typically, we won't, we, we have different options of going for a long-term or short-term ban, which is a one-year ban. And we've done that in the past. So, by doing so, if we do well to ban, we would borrow the funds the town would have to outlay in twenty-four and once we're reimbursed, we would pay down that ban. But this gives the, the supervisor the ability to borrow up to that amount for those costs in two thousand and twenty-four that the town's going to have to outlay for the, the bridge.
Okay. And Debbie, the, the total amount of the, the cost of the bridge?
A little over five million.
Five million dollars. And we're, and the grant covers ninety-five percent of that.
Correct.
Right. It was HVEA's estimate that it would be one point four that we would need to come up with in fiscal year 2024. The rest will be in fiscal year 2025.
Right.
And at that point, we'll have a much better idea about the true cost because we will have gone out to bid.
Right.
Because you have nothing ever. There's always situations. There's always something that comes up, especially on a big projects like that. So, hopefully, hopefully, we can be within budget.
Well, HVEA has been pretty good at estimating things in their history from my understanding. So, this is a major project in Ryenek. So, Randy, we're going to expect, expect you to inspect this at least on a weekly basis.
I walk my little dog there all the time. You inspect.
Thank you. All right.
He, he's sixteen now, by the way. I hope he lives to see the bridge completed.
Motion in a second, please.
Second.
Call the roll, Hope.
Councilperson Jaffe?
Yeah.
Councilperson Axlerod?
Yes.
Councilperson Nardi?
Yes.
Councilperson Selyer?
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes. And this, next resolution is for environmental compliance for Rye Town Park improvements. And these are several improvements. And this because all of these improvements are interior or are a replacement in kind. They will be type two, which will not require further environmental review. What we are, all right, before I go into, I'll say what we're doing. So, this covers the beach level bathrooms. It recovers the main bathhouse interior and the replacement of the two pavilion roofs. I think those three. Did I miss anything on this?
Just the, the deck improvements to, to the restaurant area and the.
Right, right. That just came up.
Right.
The restaurant deck needs improvements, which our attorneys have advised is the obligation of the, the park commission. And the, the money that we're spending is the town's share. And on capital improvements for Rye Town Park, the town pays sixty percent approximately and the city forty percent.
Correct.
Okay. Did I explain it adequately to everybody? Okay. We're hoping. Okay, on the environmental compliance resolution, may I have a motion in a second?
Some move.
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Councilperson Jaffe?
Yeah.
Councilperson Axlerod?
Yes.
Councilperson Nardi?
Yes.
Councilperson Selyer?
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes. And now the bond resolution, five hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars. Have I left anything out, Dave?
No, as you mentioned, that, that at the five hundred and seven thousand, four twenty-five is after the, the net cost of the project and that's the sixty percent, which is the town's share of the capital improvements for those projects.
Right, thank you. Motion in a second, please.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Councilperson Jaffe?
Yes.
Councilperson Axlerod?
Yes.
Councilperson Nardi?
Yes.
Councilperson Selyer?
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes. Our next resolution is regarding the employment and discharge of Rye Town Court clerks. This may sound arcane, but the, as we know, we have four town justices and four clerks who are in a civil service, what is called a civil service exempt position. In order to hire or discharge a clerk, the law requires that the clerk, any clerk, shall be employed and discharged only upon the advice and consent of the town justice or justices pursuant to town law, state town law, section twenty. Because we have four justices, it is unclear as to how many of the justices may or need to advise and consent to employ or discharge a court clerk. There is a court case that indicates that if a clerk is assigned to a, solely to a justice, then that justice must be the one to recommend any discharge or to hire a clerk who will be solely assigned to that justice. In the case of the Rye Town Court, we do not have clerks at the present time assigned to any justice. They rotate. So, this, and I checked with the attorneys for the Association of Towns. It is within the power of the governing body, i.e. the town council, to regulate the number of justices that may require to give advice and consent. This resolution provides that court clerk shall be employed and discharged upon the advice and consent of a majority of the sitting Rye Town justices or if no majority exists by the administrative justice with the concurrence of one additional town justice. So, that's the gravamen of what this is about. Are there any questions or comments?
This is, I can say this is exactly what I wanted to see.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hope, please, motion in a second.
I'll make, I'll second.
Uh, please call the roll.
Councilperson Jaffe?
Yes.
Councilperson Axlerod?
Yes.
Councilperson Nardi?
Yes.
Councilperson Selyer?
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes. I have one comment, Hope. There's a typo. And the, and the therefore be, the last power of one additional, there should be a space between one and additional. So, when you finalize this, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. All right. That finishes the resolutions at this portion. We have public comments on non-agenda items. Are there anybody, is there anybody who wishes to make a comment? Somebody does. State your name, please.
Richard Buzin, Six Mark Drive, Ryenek. I'll start out by thanking a couple of people. I'd like to thank Debbie because I know she's been reaching out, trying to, in the spirit that I brought last month about transparency and open government, to try and get more people to become involved. I'd like to thank Pam Jaffe for having met with me with the long myriad of questions I had at last, at the last meeting. Actually, your comment about non-agenda items, I don't quite understand why that is. And there's a reason why I don't understand it and I'll get to that part of it, which is I couldn't find anywhere where they're meeting rules. How are your meetings run? Are they run by Roberts rules? Are they run? There is no place that I found on the website how this, how meetings run. I've been in enough groups of your type where I know at the meetings how they're run and what happens at them. I couldn't find that. I also have been noticing that the agendas seem to change on an hourly basis. I know what the agenda was. In fact, one of the matters this, this evening, the five point five, which you couldn't find, as Supervisor Zuckerman said, was on the website and I thought it was inartfully worded, but now it's kind of not even here now. And I picked it up off the website yesterday.
Which one exactly?
That, that's the one about, about the judge. But in essence, that's not what it said. It said that those six hours elected trustees in the state. So, I was going to say, you don't really want to pass that because it's not worded the right way. If you go on the website and you look at five point five, let's see what I mean, it would have actually obligated all of you to work six hours a day.
That's not true.
Mr. Zuckerman? Mrs. Zuckerman?
Excuse me, Rick, Rick, that's only for people who are in the retirement system.
Right. But, but that, but it obligates those people, if any of you are in the retirement system, which I assume you are, because res, excuse me, just resolution R said last, last month, said that anybody who's in the system works three hours, should work three hours a day, five days a week. If nobody's in the system, I don't know why you have the resolution, but that's neither here nor there. That's what the resolution read. So, I'm just saying.
Some people may be in the system. Some people may not be in the system. Those people that are in the system, that, that's what this, this applies to.
I, I'm not, I'm not talking about that. All, all I'm saying is, these are in the resolutions, the agenda keeps changing. Going back to my original point about rules, do you have agenda meetings? How does, how does it work? Is the agenda, any changes to the agenda? Is it something that the board as a group votes on to put something on an agenda? Is the agenda allowed to be put on, any resolution put on by any individual member? I don't see any of this. I mean, I knew the rules in Village Ryenek. I knew the, I knew the school board rules and I don't have to tell Mrs. Jaffe, if you see what state law, education law looks like. The book's about this deck. There were rules for this. I don't know. Do you use Roberts rules? Am I allowed to make comments on certain things? I don't know. And I wonder whether or not.
Actually, Rick, the way, you're right. We run things informally. We have never had a problem with rules in terms of people having the ability to put things on an agenda if they want to. All they have to do is say, I'd like this on an agenda and talk about it. And as far as audience participation, I look and see if the audience, we generally, obviously, we take, I, this comment period is for things that are not on the agenda. If people wish to comment on an agenda item, they can raise their hand and, and comment on it and be recognized. I don't have a problem with that.
That did not happen at the last meeting.
Because we were going, we, I know exactly what happened. Because we're doing a lot of resolutions and we weren't stopping. We could have done it. At the end, you spoke, which I recognize. I looked at you, just like I looked at you now. We're not shying away from public participation.
All good. I just feel like there are a lot of things that members, the residents of the town are not privy to. And it would be nice if the community knew that that's how we did. Because that's.
I don't want to get into an argument with you.
You're not, you're not.
Anybody who, anybody who watches the meetings knows how we run the meetings. And I, and we never shy away from questions or people who wish to come and talk. And I look, I always look around as chair of the meeting. Do the council people want to have a, an opinion on anything? I look in the audience. If people want to say something, they do. I don't think, if, if the council feels that we need formal rules, we can have formal rules. By the way, when I was a trustee in Ryenek, I was the one who wrote the rules way back then. Of course, there were issues. I've been the supervisor for eight years and we've never had a problem with rules. I don't know about my predecessors, but if you look way, way back, if you can find a set of rules in the Town of Rye, take a look at them. But I don't know that Chappy Pacilipo, I don't know that Donnie Joffrey, I don't know that Bobby Morabito or Joe Carvin ever had a formal set of rules. Hope, you would know better. Do you recall? Do you recall?
We, 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 the same way. We never had a special meeting or anything for agenda or anything. The agenda was posted.
We have items, basically, the, the items on the agenda are, are set by what has to be approved, okay? Everything on here, you know, when people come up, for example, we have, when, when we have the restaurant or we have Mr. Sullivan, we know that this is happening. It goes on the agenda. And people can comment on it as they, as they wish.
I did not comment on any of the resolutions this evening because I was under the impression after last meeting that that was not what, how the board operated. And out of respect to them, I did not comment on any of those. And, and, and that's fine. If you're going to tell me that when there are resolutions that are going to be passed or discussed, that the community has the opportunity to discuss them, then that's fine. I, I, I take you at your word. But I didn't see it last time. And in particular, last time, there were quite a few of those resolutions that I think, for the sake of transparency of the community, could have been discussed, but weren't. And, you know, I'm not going to take everybody's time here tonight to talk about them. Ms. Jaffe knows what those things were. I discussed them. I think there are a lot of resolutions that were open-ended last time that were passed. I didn't have a chance to comment on them. Things that I think could have been better put together, having seen a lot of resolutions, as you have. But when there's nobody here, you know, it's very difficult for the community to do it. I, after the last meeting, I got quite a few phone calls from people who said that they heard that I had spoken and were glad that I had come and I had spoken. And all I'm doing is following through on questions, A, that I have as a resident. And all I'm doing is following through on questions, A, that I have as a resident, and B, actually, other residents who may be otherwise concerned.
I make this statement here, we're very open. People can write letters to us about, or emails as to something that was on the agenda and question it. They can pick up, many people have our phone numbers. They could certainly call Debbie and say, what about such and such? Most, a lot of what the town of Ry does is kind of non-controversial. Not that there aren't some controversial items that sometimes come up, but most of the things are non-controversial. You could have gotten up with, when Kara was just talking and saying, hey, I think that's a great idea, or I really don't think it. Or might have wanted to yell at Brian Sullivan. He didn't clean, clean up, do the cleanup sufficiently last time.
Actually, I thought they were both great. And that, that, there are other parts, again, and sometimes it, it deals with how resolutions are structured. And probably my biggest issue is procurement. If you've looked at your, at your website, there are no rules of procurement.
We have a procurement manual. We have a procurement manual and we, we follow the state rules. It is, Debbie can speak to that better than I can, but...
What I'm saying again is, this is another one of those situations. You follow state rules, that's great. It should say so on the website. It doesn't. It's very kumbaya. It's, we try and be diverse, we try and be fair, we try, all good things. But there's nothing there. There's, there's, there's no meat on the bone.
Debbie's, excuse me, Rick, is the procurement manual on the website?
I'm asking myself the very question, I just wrote it down.
So we'll put it on, it's, it's not a big deal.
Except, except if you're looking for it and you can't find it.
Yeah, but Rick, when did you discover that?
That, that probably after the last meeting, when I saw certain people were named to certain jobs with no idea, are, are there RFPs? How did people go out and get positions?
Like today, for example, John Zicka?
The RFPs?
No, no, because John Zicka wasn't on it. John Zicka was the typical municipal way of doing things. You got five bids.
If I, if I may, the, the John, the, the request for proposals was posted on our website. We have a page specifically for requests for proposals.
Great, that's the way it should be done. I mean, I wouldn't take a...
And we do.
And that's great. But, I mean, let's be honest, let's not pat ourselves on the back for doing it the right way.
I'm not patting anybody. No, no, actually, Rick, you're criticizing us for something that we already do. Okay? And if you have a suggestion, you already picked up the phone and had a private meeting with, with Pam, okay? That's fine. You could have written, any of us, you could have written the whole board and asked all about this. The last meeting was January 2nd. And you say you discovered it after the last meeting. And the entire time between that meeting and the last, you didn't send me or Debbie an email asking about the procurement policy? So, or anything else.
I know it's coming.
Look, we're, we're, we're pretty open about these things. We get, we get comments from residents all the time about different issues, which we're happy to answer if we can.
Okay. And I, to me, this is a simpler way to do it. Takes less time. I don't want to take up the hardworking members of the board's time on these kind of, and this is a situation where I, I think it's, it's fair to say I can get an immediate answer on these things.
I liked what you said before is that you, you stood up and you were talking. You made, you know, you had what you had to say. And then people came up to you, because you remind me of my father, because my father would come up and say stuff and people like, I'm so glad you did that. Those people should be here. They should be here.
Totally, totally agree with you. Totally agree with you.
Tommy's of the opinion. I mean, there was criticism that we don't send our meetings out to enough sources, which I have looked into, asked Debbie to look into. We send our meetings all over and we're starting a new Zoom link so anybody can zoom into the meetings.
That's why I started out by thanking Debbie for doing that. I think it's, I think that's great.
But the point is, let me, let me, let me speak for you, okay? Tommy, if you ask Tommy, he doesn't want a Zoom link. He doesn't want it on TV. You wanna, you wanna say something, you come to the meetings in person. That's my good friend Tommy's view, okay? Mine is not quite the same. I want to broadcast, but there are two views of that. And you're right, people should come in, we welcome people. Anybody, anybody can come in and, and say anything that they, they would like. That's why we have the public comment period. And we welcome, you know, we didn't have a lot of comments on our resolutions tonight because I don't think many of them were controversial. So we were able to get through it, but there are some times and some, sometimes people will say, you know, I, I want to speak about that. Well, listen.
Debbie, I got a question for you. How many people are on the site now watching?
Two.
Two, two. How many comments?
Just to note, just to note, since the last meeting where we were, and in the election when we were talking about transparency, Debbie has been working really hard with her team. So now we're across the public access channels again, which had unfortunately not happened. We're on YouTube, we're on Facebook. Like there are end direct links to these meetings to make it easier to find.
But nobody, but nobody's, you know, how do we know who's watching and who's not watching? We have nobody that makes comments. You know, come to the meetings. To me, it's one night out of the month. It's the third Thursday of the month. Plan it, put it in your daybook, come to the meetings. To me, that's the best way because you come, you say what you gotta say, just like you're doing. Just like you're doing. You're coming here, you got an issue and you speak forward. People, people come see me on the street, come to the meeting.
Can I?
Randy?
Can I ask you a question?
I stopped you off the street.
Just, just...
I know you do.
Just so I'm clear, right now, if someone is watching from home or on Zoom, for example, or on the internet, could that person, if one of those people right now wanted to ask a question, is there a way for them to send it in or be? Because it is a big geographic place, particularly for those of us who live in Ryneck. You know, it takes me 20 minutes to be here, someone might come home for, or, you know, come home from a day at work or, and I respectfully disagree with my colleague a little bit. If somebody wants to, you know, be sitting on their home computer, perhaps having an appropriate beverage after a hard day at work, that's okay. And I think they should, so that, that is a question. Can, can those people right now, if someone said, let me give my two cents on this issue? Is there a way to do that?
There is a way to do it. It's actually on the homepage of our website now. And we have what is called, we, we now have a static Zoom link that can be used for all of our meetings. And anyone who wishes to participate, we have a set of instructions. They can either hit the raise hand icon or they can put a question into the chat. If they hit the raised hand icon, they would be recognized by the chair.
Just like a, just like a work meeting, kind of. So that's great, I think.
Our deputy clerk, Stephanie Masiel, who is our Zoom administrator, she's right there in the control room. It's, it's her responsibility to keep an eye on that, on those boxes so that, you know, I'm watching the Facebook feed for anybody who's got a comment there. And our deputy clerk, or when Stephanie is not here, Carissa Sprague, is in the control room doing the same thing and they will alert us if somebody wishes to be recognized.
Kind of like a work meeting, the same type of thing, that people, so I think that's great.
Now, I'm gonna answer, last, last meeting you suggested, well, why don't we have a later time meeting? Like 7:30. I don't have a problem with that if people would show up. If they're not gonna show up, why should I do it earlier?
You don't know until you try. But, but that, but that being said, I think Debbie has done a really good job since the last meeting looking into better ways to do it. So, you know, give credit where credit is due. And I do. I give credit where credit is due. I think a later meeting would help, but that, you know what? Again, I can get here at 6 o'clock. I don't work in Manhattan. I don't work period. But the point, the point is, I can. And I know from my years on the village board in Rybrook and on the school board, our meetings didn't start until 7:30. And if we want to start when it's 7, we got blowback. Because they said, well, how are we gonna get home? We want to at least give the kids a kiss before we come out to the meeting. You know, whatever it is. So I, I, but, but, but I, I hear you, Tom.
For me, for me, a later meeting is actually better for me because by the time I get home and do what I gotta do to get here. But I make it here. I do what I gotta do to make it here.
But going back to my original, my original thought, Mr. Supervisor, is I, I tend to look at things in general on the website and I find, you know, maybe it's just the website. I don't know. But there are just a lot of things that are not clear and are probably not in the depth that people would like to have if they have particular issues that they want to research about. Okay? That's me. I look at the procurement policy.
Rick, let me, let me tell you something. If you have found such things, feel free to communicate them with us, especially with Debbie.
Well, you know what? Maybe I'm the only one. I think I doubled the, the population of this meeting by being here. But, you know, that's the reality. And I also...
Well, actually, Rick, if you don't count the people who are here for presentations, it's, it's, it's not double, it's infinity.
Infinity.
Going from zero to one.
That's true. That's true. But I, I, you know, I don't want to take that much credit that I'm infinity. I had one, one last point with, and the board knows this. I foiled, and it's meant, it's no disrespect personally to the town attorney or Mr. Tartalia, who I coached softball with 35 years ago. I've known him very well. I do not know Mr. Bender at all. I want to find out what the duties of the town attorney are. Again, not on the website. I did receive from the clerk's office a description, sort of like the procurement. It was like this very nebulous about, and it was from the county, I believe. So it gave no information about what the actual job is. I mean, I'm glad it did say at the bottom of it that you did have to have a three-year law degree. That was, that was good. But what it said did not really talk about the duties. I'm sure that Mr. Bender carries out.
Well, I think, I think that it did list the duties of, of an attorney for a town in generic terms. But I, but I, I'm gonna cut you...
Generic terms may be a proper way of putting it.
I'm going to cut you off with that because there used to be a commercial, I think, for Verizon where they said, I'm working on it. Yeah, we're working on it.
Fair enough.
Okay.
Fair enough. Thank you. I appreciate it. I appreciate the board's stuff. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Rick. Any comments after that from Facebook or anything? No?
No, but we're up to three people on Facebook. Debbie, I have a question, because we're now live streaming. Debbie and Sue have done a lot of work in the past month. We've actually updated the homepage of the town site so that you can just go to the homepage and click into a meeting. But one of the links that we are streaming on right now is YouTube. And I don't know if people can comment on that. So that's just something for us to look into. And I was just, as I was combing through the site, because I was very happy to see you and Sue had gotten through the update and it's right there, the second block. So that is more transparency. I was like, I wonder, you know, if people are gonna watch there.
Then anybody who does see this meeting, whether they see it on YouTube or Facebook or they see it over the Rybrook, Porchester or, or Mamaroneck TV stations, if there are improvements that anybody would like to suggest, send them in, email them.
It's at rytowncouncil@townofrynewark.com? Or to send them to Debbie? We also have a, on our website, we do have a, a box for submitting comments and requests. We get them all the time.
Great, yeah.
So anybody who has a comment, then I...
Yeah, that's actually, I was gonna ask, let's suppose a diligent member of the public looks at the website and sees something and says, gee, I'm not, I don't think this is a fulsome description of the duties and responsibilities of the town attorney. Just from looking at, is, there is a place, is there, this is a question where someone said, could say, I would appreciate it if at the next meeting you would clarify the duties and responsibilities of the town attorney, because it's not clear to me.
We have, we, we do.
There is a place for that?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's great.
This place also where you can clarify the duties and responsibilities of the councilperson from Ryneck.
Well, it's a contact, it's a contact test.
That's tongue-in-cheek, Randy. No, I, what Debbie is saying obviously is that people can in fact say what, you know, make comments of whatever improvements. We're always looking to improve. It's not a perfect website, we all know that.
No, unfortunately.
But it sounds like it's pretty darn good to me.
I mean, within the framework that Debbie and her team have to work with, I think they're doing a really good job. There are many different platforms that a municipal government can use and this is the one that the town has had. And we do look at it and I know Town Attorney has been looking at it with us as well and trying to figure out ways to make information more readily available. So, you know, we talk a lot about how do we put a hot button on the homepage for, you know, such a thing as, I'd like to make a comment. So click, you know, so all these, all this feedback helps us. You know, we just want to improve.
Something positive. During the election campaign, I thought that the, the financial information that the village discloses is quite, quite fulsome for anyone who wants to take the time and it's all there.
I mean, we link right through to huge spreadsheets that are clickable and openable. I also want to say thank you to the town staff for, once again, listening in the election and making sure that all of our posts on social are in English and Spanish fully now. So we're doing our best as far as to meet the feedback we're getting from constituents. We can always raise our game. By the way, Rick, I just typed purchasing policy into the search bar on the top of the homepage and the procurement policy came right up.
Oh, I got policy, it just didn't say much. I said that, I said that it's very generic. If you're hiring a person or a firm or a company, the question is, how many of those have to go out for an RFP? Is there a dollar amount that's, that is tied to it? When we go outside to have either Mr. Bender's firm...
You've got...
If we go out to bid or not, and I'm, I'm, I'm asking the question, for legal services, for Mr. Tartalia, Mr. Bender, outside of his job as town attorney? Or do we go out for bid based on the fact that, that not, let me finish, all right? Let me finish. I'll give you plenty of time, I promise.
I thought you were asking me a question.
I, I, but I didn't finish the question. The question was, if it's over a certain dollar amount and in your budget it was a hefty amount of outside counsel, do we go out to law firms to do that? Or is that, how, how is that done? It's not, is it done on a dollar amount basis? If it's a 200, okay, so that's, that was my question. So how is it done?
It's based on, it depends on what the, the town of Ry has very limited legal services that it performs, unlike a lot of other municipalities. Most of the, for example, if there is a tort claim, our insurance carrier handles it and the attorneys that they assign to that claim. If, for example, labor issues are involved, we have labor council. our insurance carrier handles it and the attorneys that they assign to that claim. Uh, if, for example, labor issues are involved, we have Labor Council. Uh, Dan basically handles the tax certs. Jeff handles some tax certs and also, uh, does the in-rem's. Most, after that, we don't have a lot of legal services that we perform. And, and everything else is done as in, for Jeff, anyway, as his, uh, uh, job as a town attorney, coming to meetings, giving advice, all kinds of.
Right, right.
Generic things.
Right, right.
And that, that's what's covered.
I, no, I understand.
We don't, we don't have any major law firms. I know some, uh, municipalities hire law firms. Okay? Rybrook hires Keenan Bean, for example. Uh, and they, uh.
But, what, what you're saying to me.
And they have different attorneys assigned to different things at different rates. The Village of Portchester is just hiring a new village attorney, which some, uh, some municipalities do also.
Right, right.
And it, it varies.
But what you're saying in this particular case, that it's a non-competitive bidding situation, even though the amount of dollars by your own budget is a couple hundred thousand dollars that goes out.
It depends on, on, on what the work is. Yeah, it is done on an hourly basis.
Okay, but it's non-competitive. In other words, for argument's sake, a blind book graduate who just graduated from law school who happens to have an area of expertise, if he wanted that position, could he come to you and interview for it? Is it, is it advertised?
It's, it hasn't.
You, you understand what I mean? This is just in general. If there are policies, they're policies. If there aren't policies and this is, we're gonna give it to you.
When you, when you're dealing with, we have, we have the, uh, ability, as any municipality does, to go out for an RFQ for qualifications. It's not an RFP. It's an RFQ.
Right.
For, for anything. We, we do, we do it for engineering, we can do it for architects, we can do it for legal services, we could do it for accounting services and we've done that in the past. Uh, as long as we're satisfied with the services, there's no, no reason to change, especially when the, the hourly rate is a reasonable rate. We're not paying eight hundred dollars or a thousand dollars an hour for an attorney. We're paying, I think it's two hundred and eighty-five dollars, which is a reasonable rate. So, the question is, with that rate, uh, are we getting adequate services?
And all I'm asking is, what is the process? I'm not questioning their abilities.
Are you suggesting that, that every year we go out for a new bid for professional services? I mean, that's a possibility too.
Well, you know.
You know, the, the, the other municipality that I'm familiar with was, is Rybrook and I don't know that they've gone out repeatedly. They've been with Keenan Bean for many, many years.
Yeah, uh, and, and if, if that's the case, but how did they go about getting Keenan Bean? And you would know better than I would, I'm not one. So, all I'm talking about is process. I'm not talking about people. I'm talking about process. And the process, if the process, if you say to me, Mr. Supervisor, that this is a non-competitive situation where the town decides, this is, the town board decides, this is what they're gonna do, then, then I get it. But the question is, is that the policy of the town board when it comes to certain professional services? That's, I think I'm asking a very fair question.
It is a fair question.
And, and, and I'm not even quibbling with the fee. I know what lawyers' fees are because I, half my family are lawyers. So I, that's, that's not the question. The question is the process. And everything I've talked about here tonight happens to be processed. I just like the process to be nice and smooth, everybody know how it, how it works and to feel comfortable with the processes that the town is going through when they are fiduciary for my tax money. Just like everybody said when they used to yell at me when I was on the school board. Same thing. Just you, you, you're a fiduciary. Let's make sure everybody's doing the right thing for the right reasons. And, and all my question is, in that particular case is, what is the policy? It's not in here when it comes to, to those services. It would be nice if in your policy it said, certain things over a certain dollar amount will be subject to, to bidding.
We do.
RFPs.
We do, and, and we do, and we do public work.
I'm not saying you don't, I'm just saying you don't see it. You're missing my point here. Let's see all of it.
If I may?
Sure.
There's a thirty-nine-page procurement policy that I found with two keystrokes on our webpage.
Okay.
And it's right up now.
Okay. Thirty-nine pages. Okay.
In which the first two sheets, aside from the table of contents, is an executive summary of our purchasing policy.
Okay. Okay. I couldn't find it. Maybe I'm not as tech savvy as other people, but if I can't find it, you know darn well there are a lot of other people in the community who can't.
Rick.
So.
I typed purchasing into the search bar.
Purchasing?
Yeah.
I asked about your procurement policy, not purchasing. Two different issues.
They're synonyms.
I don't think so in this case.
All right, listen, that's enough, that's enough.
That is enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, reports. Is Rick here?
Dick Federico, Director of Grounds Facilities. Now that Debbie put that up there, I'll go, well, first I want to welcome Kara to the Crawford family. And we are a family here. Um, if, if you missed the first Westchester Philharmonic, you missed one heck of a show and it was packed. Tommy was there, Gary was there, Debbie was there. We couldn't fit anybody else. That's how packed it was. Um, we have coming up, two free shows. March ninth, Saturday, is the Jam Acoustic, Acoustic. Uh, it's Tommy's friends, Mike T., um, their classic rock pop, new, new country. And they played last year and they're really good. On Saturday, March sixteenth, we have Paul Jensen and the Urban Coyotes. They played throughout the area. A lot of people know them. They have a good backing following. They're gonna be playing at eight o'clock. Then we will return with the Westchester Philharmonic. Uh, actually, they're gonna do Saturday, March thirtieth. Uh, there was a little back and forth with, uh, the man who runs the Westchester Philharmonic. The original date was the twenty-fourth. It was a Sunday. His, um, people that were gonna play couldn't, some of them couldn't make it for the twenty-fourth, so he said, how about the thirty-first?
Thirty-first?
No, no, I know.
Oh, okay.
He said, how about the thirty-first? And when we got back to him, we told him it's Easter. So he moved it to a Saturday. Uh, so it's March thirtieth on a Saturday at two o'clock and the last one is April twenty-first at two PM, which is a Sunday. Very shortly, we will be posting on the website the whole year for Crawford Park. It'll include, uh, all our summer concerts, movies, our big events. Um, and after I work a while with Kara, her events. It's about all I have right now, except I'm looking forward to getting the Ford F-150 after some time of backing forth. But, um, we are, we, we will be completely green now. Um, I hope to put the GasGator up. For, uh, what do you, what's it called again?
Auction?
Auction. And, uh.
When do you expect that? Because we could've done that.
We can do it for the next meeting.
We'll do it, okay.
Next meeting. And, uh, that makes us totally green.
Okay, great. Thanks, Vic. Debbie, you have any other report on finance?
No, I just, I submitted the monthly zero report on the outstanding balance as of January thirty-first. It's a million-two, which is about a little over half of one percent of the total levies. So, that's, that's our lowest amount. It's comparable to last year. It's even lower than last year at the same time. Then we start the process all over again. We have to make the school districts whole in April. So that's the.
And the county.
Well, the county doesn't happen until May and October, but the school districts, it's about a hundred and ten million. So, of total levies for the four school districts. Harrison is just a partial. Um, but those collections have been coming in and we've been remitting payments to the school districts uh, since, since October. So, we're, we're in pretty good shape there. So, we'll, we'll see where we are, uh, come March. But, uh, we're in really good shape in terms of our receivables, which allows us to have excess funds, earning interest from TD Bank and we also use New York, New York Class Investments, which is earning actually a little over five percent in interest. So, um, that's, that's, uh, that's helping our interest income for the town. And that's it.
Thank you, Dave. Is Nick on? Receiver have a report?
Yeah, sorry. He's on mute. Thank you, Brian. Oh, there he is.
Good evening, Mr. Supervisor, members of the town council.
Hi, Nick.
Receiver of taxes. Just remind everybody, all our taxpayers in the Village of Rybrook, that it's time to make your second installment of your property tax. I remind everybody that we do have that special lockbox out in front of the building. If you want to drive by and put it in, this way you don't have to deal with the increased postage on stamps or the possibility of the check getting lost. If you can put it right inside there, we can pick that up three, four times a day. Also, I remind you of our online, uh, payments, which is becoming more and more popular. And we do have that, something that most towns do not have, where you can preset your tax payment. So, once you do get on, noticed in the beginning of the month, you can set the date that you want your payment made. And I call it, set it and forget it. So, we have people call and say, I forgot to pay my taxes. So if you do that, you don't have to worry about it. And if it's an E-check, it's only a dollar and a half fee, no matter what the, the amount is. So, everybody, please, clean up the Rybrook, be looking for their money soon. So, get your tax money in so we have it to pay them. Thank you.
Hold it, Nick. Before you go, before you go, uh, I was, uh, I had a, uh, an email from the, uh, Westchester Supervisors Association. One of the supervisors had, uh, a question as to whether other supervisors and towns were having problems with the post office. This fits right in with what Nick was saying. And virtually every supervisor wrote back, yes. Payments were coming, who were, payments put in the mail were coming in late. Um, and they had a backtrack to see when the postmark was. Some were very late. Um, there are all kinds of glitches with it. Uh, and every town has been dealing with this problem. So, I would urge you along with our tax receiver to use, if you, if your bank is not paying, you know, through your mortgage, if you're paying the taxes yourself, I would urge you to not use the post office. Use one of the alternative methods. If you're gonna drive to the post office, you might as well drive to the town office, put it right in the lockbox. Not only do you not need to put a stamp in, but you know it's gonna get there on time because as a receiver says, they pick it up about four times a day. So, you will get credit either that day or the following day for any deposit that you make. Um, the alternative is to pay through your bank automatically, online. Again, for a dollar fifty fee, which I guess the stamp is approaching that, that, that right now, gets done automatically and it gets done on time. So, uh, thank you, Nick, for that reminder and I, 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 uh, reiterate what you say. If you're paying your tax by yourself, don't use the post office unless you mail it like three weeks ahead of time. So, thank you. Go ahead.
When they leave it in the box in the front?
Yeah.
Uh, they automatically get a receipt. Once they process it and they have the receipt so that people will know that it was picked up.
That's even better. We have a very advanced collection system. And actually, while you're there, Rick, part of it is due to you because when I first got elected, you were complaining that there weren't enough methods to collect the taxes.
This is great.
And reacted on it. Nick, thank you. Uh, Jeff, do you have anything? Anything additional?
Hi. Feel free to call me. Um, let me just suggest one thing or a couple of things that Mr. Buzin, you know, was sort of toggling back and forth between. So, he's toggling between transparency and process. And let me just remind the council that the transparency efforts that you've made over the last, let's call it eight years, have been unbelievable. Whenever a foil, a Freedom of Information request is made, we have satisfied it in accordance with the law and we have gone above and beyond thanks to HOPE in terms of divulging and releasing detailed information that other towns, and I've checked on this, that other towns would not. And we've been very upfront and very transparent. In particular, my legal fees. So my fees during this last campaign were foiled for an entire year and we gave them everything, including detail. And that was a theme of your opponent's campaign. We met that, we addressed it upfront with it, explained it, okay? So transparency, from my view as your council, transparency by this board in this town is outstanding. There's very little hidden and any requests that are made are satisfied. In terms of process, process is always a work in progress. We've made tremendous progress on the process that we engage in, in this town, whether it be procurement, purchasing, basically the same thing, whether it be special events, community input, responding to constituents. From where I sit, having worked for the state senate, having worked for the city of New York, having worked, uh, you know, for various municipalities in this town, in this county, it's outstanding. And you should know that. Can it be improved? Of course it can be improved, okay? But, you know, criticism for criticism's sake is curious to me. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Uh, I just want to say one thing. One of the things that we've tried to do, since we're talking about transparency and Jeff brought up the, the question of foils, is I would like to make foils as unnecessary as possible by having as much on the website as possible so people don't have to ask for information. They could find the information. That's a goal of ours. Uh, we may not have succeeded yet. It may be an impossible thing to do, but that's what our goal is, to do that. Uh, okay, uh, town clerk, your report has been submitted.
Yes.
Do you have anything else to add?
Nothing to add.
Thank you. I think, uh, we're, before we go into executive session, do we have any comments from members of the council? Pam?
Um, I just want to take a moment of quietude and gratitude for the man whose seat I now sit in, Tony Baxter, who was a councilperson before I was. Unfortunately, we lost him very early and I just want to give gratitude for him for all he did, that I. that I was able to walk into and keep walking with, and to his family.
Thank you.
Wholeheartedly. I treasured the time that I got to work with Tony. It was only two years of his term because of the staggered nature of our terms, but it was very meaningful for me, and I think he has done so much for so many people, and his legacy will live on. And of course, thoughts and prayers to his family, and our deepest condolences.
Tony was a good guy, he was a good councilman. He loved the town of Ry, and he was on the Sustainability Committee. Yeah, and, you know, just my condolences to the family.
Tony ran with me. The first time I ran for town supervisor, the ticket was myself, Lindsey Jackson, and Tony. And we served those four years together, and I guess he didn't run for reelection after the four years. And I also knew him as the principal at Blumberg High School for a short period of time. My kids, I believe, my kids, at least one of them was there when he was the principal. So I've known Tony, and he was really a wonderful person, and we miss him.
Went to his service. His brothers were talking with us, and they said that this was a highlight of his life. He really treasured the time he had here. And I always spoke to Tony, well, Tony would attend at my church, so I got to see him three weeks before he passed. But he was, he was few in words, but he always had a lot of substance whenever he...
You're right.
Commented on things, yeah. So he's truly missed.
Thanks, Hope. With that, we need to go into executive session to discuss a specific personnel matter. May I have a motion and a second to go into executive session?
Sumed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and for purposes of the public, we have a possible resolution. If we act on a resolution, we will come back into public session to pass that resolution. Okay? All right, thank you. We'll go next door.
Are we back on?
Yes.
I think.
All right, ready, three, two, one.
Motion, we'll do this again, motion to return to open session.
I make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're back on the record. We had a discussion regarding the appointment of an administrative justice to the town of Rye Justice Court. The motion involves reappointing Anthony Provenzano as the administrative justice for a term to expire on December 31st, 2024 at a stipend of $15,000 in addition to his normal compensation as town justice. May I have a motion and a second?
I'll make the motion.
Hope please call the roll.
Counselperson Jaffe?
Yes.
Counselperson Axarot?
Yes.
Counselperson Nardi?
Yes.
Counselperson Selya?
Yes.
And supervisors are coming.
Yes, thank you everybody, and may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.